Everybody is ready to roll? Dave, you're first. Why don't you come on up and talk to us?
Awesome. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Okay.
Do you know everybody, Dave?
I pretty much do, yeah. Just wanted to tell you. So I've got a handout. If you want to take one and pass it down.
I was at a conference one time. This guy was doing a presentation or doing a presentation and somebody opened my clock turn and he stopped and he says, "Oh, God, I love that sound." I think I just think of having a nice cold beer.
Got my mouth watering now.
That's what he said. Don't mind us, Dave. Tell us about that.
Alright, so updating on the spray park. So if we flip over to the first page there. The project got started late October of 2018. We had a crew from Steinbach come up and laid all the piping, all the basic electrical and the concrete and some of the fixers up before it froze. Luckily, we needed that to get our $50,000 grant money because it had to be quote-unquote completed. We're past that point now, which is good, so that check's in the mail for us. Page after that is going to be what the park looks like once it's completed. That's a question we get quite often. So there's the concept drawing from the company. We have several different features. Some in-ground jets that spray. We've got a couple of water guns on the right-hand side there that the kids can spray each other with. We've got little kiddie tables for younger kids to play with. And we've got some buckets with water on top that drop. That's what it's going to look like. After that, we've got, where's the spray park located? Which is at the corner of Charlebaux and St. Antoine. Made a little bit of legend. The red there is where the actual spray park is. I know one of the questions that had been brought up was parking. So in green, you can see that we have more than adequate parking for what is going to be required for the park.
You think street parking will be a problem there? Like, would we have to do any control of that, you think?
There's going to be people who want to park there.
One side of St. Antoine, yeah.
Is it further parking there?
Yeah, no, I'm just curious, that's all.
I mean, I think you can park on Charlebaux, right? On the one side of Charlebaux.
You can park on the one side of Charlebaux.
The side with the house is not the park side, but the other side, right?
I thought it was the park side.
Oh, maybe it is.
Park side here, I think.
Is it?
Yeah, I thought it was the park side.
And this side here.
Okay.
So from there, just for ourselves and the Paw families, what have we got left to do? We've got some funds to finish bringing in just to kind of complete the park. Continue to do grant and fundraise, looking for some community sponsorship. And the rest of that is really upgrading Centennial Park. One of the things that we ended up doing for putting the fixers up in the location was we actually took down one of the slides that didn't meet code anymore. So we're just going to be getting rid of that particular slide. However, once the park's complete, the water itself and everything is turned on, we want to upgrade that park a little bit. There's not much for benches or anything around there. And certainly, people that bring their kids, kids, grandkids, so forth, to the park, they're not going to want to get wet. So I want to make sure that it's inviting for them as well, whether we have some picnic tables and so forth. So that's going to be continuing on our agenda.
Where are you sitting dollar-wise?
For what we got in the bank?
No, for what you need to raise.
What we need to raise? I guess it all depends on what we're going to be talking to some groups about donating some picnic tables and so forth. See what we can get out of other groups. And then it'll be kind of left to see what we need to raise. I think for the park, we're good. I just need to maybe contacting Sam here right away because he's got to do the waterworks hookup for us. How the Paw is going to be taking care of that. We're flipping the bill for that, just if anyone didn't know. Just instead of having obviously anyone else hook up the water, we're just getting the town to do the whole thing since you guys are going to be taking care of the park after. That way you know where everything is. So some of the other questions that were raised were, what are the hours of the park? And really, that's up to the town to decide. The idea of the park is to be used on the hotter days of the year. Now, obviously, we get some hot days at 10 o'clock in the morning in the year. And you guys can choose to, you know, maybe start it at 10 o'clock in the morning. All the timers are all programmable. So once we give the keys, so to speak, to the town, that's something that we can get programmed in there for when the town wants to use it. Will there be a person in attendance when it's opened? No, spray parks don't typically have anybody running the park. The main controller is on a timer. When kids go to use a feature, they simply hit the button, enjoy the feature for 20, 30 seconds, and it automatically shuts itself off. I know in talking with Sam, he was planning on getting it, getting people to go by on a daily basis and obviously on hotter days, maybe a few times during the day. We had talked about Green Team, whether or not that's, who's going to be used, I guess remains to be seen. But we expect an influx at certain periods of the year, times of the day. And obviously, we need to keep it clean. As far as attendance as well, there's no waiting pool, so there's no need legally to have an attendant there. Parks everywhere else that we've seen, Winnipeg, Dauphin, there are no attendants that monitor the park. Will it be fenced? As of right now, fencing is not in our plan. Do we have an issue against fencing? Not necessarily. Certainly, this is a big investment that we're putting into the town and we like to keep it as beautiful for as long as we can. But currently, fencing is not on our agenda. Will there be washrooms or change rooms?
Have you, just a question. I mean, like some of the spray parks I've seen, they're in a park and the park itself is fenced in itself. And then this one's kind of unique in the fact that it's like it's an open area and obviously looks aesthetically much better without a fence. Like, have you ever gone to, because I know you guys checked out lots of spray parks where it's like an open area?
Where the whole park itself has been fenced. You know, and I think if, you know, the town wanted to proceed in doing a fence, we would certainly be on board to help fundraise or get grants written.
But have you seen ones where, like, exactly like the way it is right now in terms of no fence, it's kind of an open park? And it's been fine, or?
Yeah, absolutely. We were down in a couple in Winnipeg, close to my niece's house, and no problems whatsoever. The whole park is just completely wide open. But I also have seen some where the entire park itself is fenced in and the spray park is just inside that particular park. I know it talks with the town previously, concerns of ATVs or snowmobiles going on to it, whether they could see it in the summer or the winter or not. One of the types of fencing that were brought up were the poles that are in the ground and just split far enough apart where people can easily walk through. But if you tried to take a quad through, you're just not going to make it through the poles. Certainly something that can be discussed. You know, currently, obviously, right there, there is no fence other than the fence for the ball diamond. That's fencing off the ball diamond.
I think our, one of our concerns was that the winter fencing for Skidoo's.
For sure. Which could be addressed with actual snow fencing too, I guess, right?
Just drive the poles in in the fall.
Because we don't want to just, you know, put this park up and walk away, right? I've got, they've given us cans of paint to color match in case we do need to paint. I have those in my heated garage with the rest of my paint and certainly as someone does deface that, I'll definitely be there fixing that up. Next, as far as the washrooms and change rooms, again, no washrooms, no change rooms. Part of that to do with costs, costs from our standpoint, costs from Town of the Paw standpoint, having someone to monitor it again at these other parks. Kids typically dry off either they're within walking distance and they dry off on their way home, or typical parents will just wrap their kids in a towel, you know, maybe have something to eat or let them play in the other section because they don't want their kids just playing in the water section the whole time. Let them burn off their energy that way.
This water is being treated all the time?
This water is not being treated all the time. One of the plans that we looked at was for recycling the water. If we did that, there would be the need of a full-time attendant to monitor and test the water throughout the day. This is water that goes just down the drain, so to speak.
And it's town water?
It's town water.
So it's actually treated, so?
Yes, yeah. Well, it's not recycled, treated, or, you know, coronated. I think that's what you'd get.
Yeah, I was getting that, what happens to the kids when they first get wet? They tend to wet themselves in different places and all of a sudden, you're recycling it and it's coming back on you.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. We don't want that. And last question, at least in my email here, was if there's going to be a maintenance building. Again, no maintenance building planned for it. There's really no maintenance to do to the park other than cleaning up trash. There's turning the park on in the summer and shutting the park off in the fall. There is going to be a cabinet there with all the electronics in it. That's all locked up, but certainly if something needed to be, needed to stay at the park, whether it's some sort of supplies or garbage bags or something, I'm sure we can find some room in that cabinet. But, yeah, no specific maintenance building for it.
Are there pumps or are you just running off town pressure?
There are pumps.
There's pumps, and where would they be located?
They're in that cabinet as well. The cabinet is probably 36 by 36 by 36, give or take.
Is, like, the, I don't know how much you know about this, but like the turn-on and turn-off procedures, are they pretty simple, or?
They're pretty straightforward. When they do have it all hooked up, they will give us a session on how to do it. Obviously, I'd like to take part in it and obviously I'm sure there's going to be representative from Town of the Paw that are going to want to take part in it. And I did ask if we could videotape it just in case there's turnover. It can be videotaped, so that is, can stay in the archives about turning it on and turning it off. And I believe there's a way to air bleed it just to make sure that all the water is out of the lines before it's closed off in the fall.
Good. We're not the first one.
Are you anticipating any signs at all?
Absolutely, we will be putting up a sign. We're still looking at what kind of signs. I can't tell you exactly how big, but absolutely there will be a sign with all our big contributors, Destination Marketing, Twin Motors, so on and so forth, everyone that's contributed. We got a nice big round from Westover last year we weren't expecting either.
And then that one sign will have the rules kind of thing on it too, right? Like, there's not 10 signs there, just one?
Yeah, I certainly don't want to put signs anywhere that they become, you know, just fall into the background kind of thing. But I figured the rules, the best place for the rules is probably going to be on the cabinet, whether we put one on each side of the cabinet that's already there.
Dave, I'm sorry, I'm not up to speed on some of the stuff. The equipment itself, what's the projected lifespan of it?
Depends on the particular pieces of equipment, but we're ranging anywhere from 15 to 25 years.
15 to 25. And when they commission it, the town staff will be there to learn whatever needs to be learned, I'm guessing?
Yes, yeah. I'll definitely be in touch with the town once that date comes. We haven't set a date for the contractors to come back and finish everything off. But obviously, we're waiting for the snow to finally go away and...
That's what I was going to ask, Dave. Do you have an actual schedule when things are supposed to get?
No, right now, we don't. The contractor wants the rest of their money and we want to give them the rest of their money, so we want to get this done as soon as we can. If we can get them here in May, June, is kind of what we talked about last year. We want to have it ready to go before we want to turn it on, obviously. And at the same time, they want to get it done as soon as possible so they can get paid. The remainder of their money.
Cool, any other questions for Dave? Good, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Oh, it looks good already. Yeah, it's really good already.
It's going to warm up, but can't wait to turn it on this summer.
Yeah.
Planning out a barbecue and a DJ. I don't know if a barbecue, I think Domino's wants to step in and sponsor some pizza, but we're going to have a bit of a party there when we do turn it on, so hopefully see folks there.
Alright, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Just one last thing before we close on this. There was a resolution passed by previous council and it's basically saying that they're going to commit, like, the Paw families building a better community will commit to a $25,000 reserve fund for their operating of the spray park and that council agreed to the operation and maintenance of the facility with the funds used to operate the spray park to come from Community Enhancement Fund. So just wanted you to be aware that there was approval on this. And I'll get back.
Evening.
Hey.
How's everybody doing?
Good, good. How are you?
I'm pretty good, thanks for asking.
So you got a check for us, or?
Oh, yeah.
No bounce? No checks. No, just I got some copies of those emails they sent around here in case to refer to if there's any questions. I also got a response back from Bruce regarding the questions you guys left on that meeting I could make about the police system build and stuff. And it was about full-time employees. So I don't know if you just want to make a copy of this and hand it out, or do you want me to read it?
I can do that, actually.
Okay. I got it a few days ago and I thought I'd just save it for later. Rather than emailing it, so. Yeah. How's things going? Pretty good. Slowed down a little bit. Yeah, need to read it.
Very good, thanks.
Yeah, a little bit, but that doesn't mean it's going to be like that. It's just catching up the paperwork and stuff like that. March Madness is over, so that's why budget and resources and assessments for all this are due, so I don't know why they cram it one month. I don't know why we can't space it, but it's not my decision.
We'll cheer you year in, two-way, March.
Yeah, we're April, Monday, April, yeah. But it's just I don't really get the, I get the budget part has to go there, but the assessments, I don't know why we don't move them to October, November, have them every month at that, or year at that time rather than putting everything in March. You can still, as long as you're assessing for a year, I don't see where it matters very much. That's kind of my take, but they don't listen to me.
Well, work hard.
Work hard. And then make that decision, turn it on. Yeah, that's, that's, that's a avenue, I guess. Direction to go. Yeah, so I could make that meeting in town. That was the one, you guys traveled for hockey, so would have liked to have been there. My understanding is Kevin answered a lot of the questions?
Yeah, Lewis, it was good.
Yeah, he's pretty, he's been around. Less than me, actually, in the outfit, but he's climbed up real fast and he's learned a lot about upper management, financing and billing and all that stuff sooner than myself.
I don't think we were the first ones to think of the questions that we came with. You know what I mean? Like, it's, I think it's, you know, everybody's asking the same questions, right? Because it's a huge part of everybody's budget. They had answers for pretty much all of it.
Yeah, no, I totally agree there. And even like prior transfer in here, a lot of the questions were about that, the same stuff.
Yeah.
So I get it.
Cool. So this note that you've given us, Brent, is...
That's right.
This note here is about...
The full-time employees, I think it's bolded there, how does the increase/decrease of full-time employees affect the rent per square meter that is billed to the Town of the Paw?
Okay.
So the answer just starts at above there, I don't know, that's just what he sent.
So no matter how many full-time employees you have, our rent is still the same regardless?
That's what I read out of this, yeah.
So we're always paying the same rent no matter if we, if you're three short or no short or whatever, right?
Yeah, because it always goes by that paper, right? But if you get more people in on paper, because I think, correct me if I'm wrong here, the bonus was like put more traffic members in there, the rent went down, I thought.
Yeah.
So I don't know if that's changed from reading this. Depends how you interpret it, I guess, but...
Well, the traffic numbers is...
I think it's because the traffic members were provincial.
Yeah.
And we pay for municipal. I think that's where the difference. So when we bring in more provincial, it should lessen our cost.
Yes.
And actually, at the last meeting, based on the information you presented, we are going to be asking for another provincial member to offset all these other provincial costs that you're spending on the staff, the mental health act, the Child Family Service. Those are all provincial bodies.
That's true.
Is there any impact with those CENs?
Have you guys, you guys have heard that news? Yeah, so that's, they're going full blast with that and they figure six months turnaround. Really? Yeah, they're talking big, big change, like fast. I don't want to be the pessimist here, but I've never seen it happen that quick.
Nope.
There's, I think there's just so much more there that there's, they just think it's just bodies in, bodies out, and it doesn't work that way. There's vehicles, there's IT equipment, there's scheduling, there's oversight, there's I know it's First Nation, but there's still boundaries, there's an MOU that would have to be done with myself and the Paw with oversight on that from Kevin. Because it's just policing, right? When they're short, who do they call for backup? Guess who's going across the bridge?
So that's my, well, some of my questions relate to that. So is the plan right now that the RCMP is going to be completely out of the OCN adjustment?
Yeah, because they get the call, who polices them, right? I mean, I think the Manitoba, I think Justice of Manitoba has a say and can probably say no to it, but I don't know if that's a fight they want to do. They want to give them their voice, just like the community, if you wanted to explore another police service, you'd have that right. So I don't foresee them, and this is just a prediction, I don't foresee them stopping it from happening or trying to stop it from happening. I think it's going to go ahead with that FM. I call them DOPS, but it's Manitoba First Nation Police Service.
So from a semantic sort of perspective, so there's six or eight members over there?
There's seven.
Seven? So they will be gone from the region?
Well, I think, I don't know, it hasn't been actually mapped out, but I think how this is going to play out is once those people, when the date starts, those people will be called affected members, they'll probably just come over here. The payment to them will, of course, be touched by the town. It'll be, probably the province will pick it up until those members are A, transferred, because they have to give them their checkmark that they're completed their four years there because it's not their fault that they're getting pushed out. Or they'll give them the option, do you want to finish your four years here and work in the Paw with provincial money? So you might get bonus bodies without paying for them for short term.
And so...
Might.
So that, so things move along, they're no longer here, right? That was just the town detachment.
Yeah, releasing just DRM in the town.
And what happens if you get a call to OCN?
Like, it wouldn't come through us. The only, it would come to us is if they're requesting, we need help now. We need you.
Do we charge them for that?
No, the overtime, strictly from what I've seen it, because there's no, there's no budget between police services. There's no transfer of money between a Winnipeg Police Service, the RCMP and DOPS. I know, that's what, we had this, we had this in, I went through this when I was in Roblin because we had Roblin, Russell, Rossburn, and we had Wamisacapo. When I was there, Wamisacapo disbanded from the RCMP, went DOPS. I believe they're still DOPS. Now, when they needed backup now, it's not a question, oh, we can't go, who's going to pay? We just go, you do it, you get through the situation. And then it happened more often than the staff sergeant wanted it to. And it ended up being like he knew this, but X dollars were out of his budget because there's no transfer to bill them back. And it works the same the other way, though.
Yeah, like it would be unfortunate.
I agree.
If the taxpayers of the Town of the Paw have to start subsidizing that.
I agree. I don't know if that's how the actual answer is. I've seen it that way. Maybe things have changed where there's, there is a way that it is billed back and paid back now, but I know in like, I'll say 14 or 15, it wasn't working that way. So it'd be the same for the whole province.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I know right now RCMP, you guys can switch back and forth, but if they're no longer RCMP, they have zero authority on our side. Is that correct? Or is it incorrect?
They don't have primary authority. The police officer has 24/7 authority in Manitoba, but it's just run by the province for them. But for us, we're swarmed by the federal government, so we have authority anywhere in Canada. So we don't go on other places to primarily, hey, we're taking over here. We won't do that. But if no one's around and we encounter something and we have to act on it, we can.
They can't do that here.
They can't come here to enforce stuff, but if they're here at McDonald's and getting a coffee and there's no RCMP around, the guy needs to be arrested, they can arrest them.
Okay.
Because there's something, it's a citizen arrest, too, right?
There's still police officers.
Yeah, there's still police officers.
So you could call them for backup as well?
Yes, for sure.
But in terms of like, I'm just looking at the legality, so you go, let's just say you get a call over there and there's the guy in charge, but I don't, I don't think we're going with this plan here. Be, I don't feel comfortable. No, guys, we're going, we're doing this, this is what we're doing right now. And something happens. And they were like, and you guys don't, I mean, obviously the training would be maybe different, maybe you guys have more experience, maybe not. I'm not saying, I'm just, I just, how do you?
Well, I don't think we should be... To get into that, but at the end of the day, if they call us for assistance, we'd help them. And they would run the show as to how it's going to operate. So it'd be like, no, we don't need you anymore, could you stick around and help us? But legality parts and stuff, I think, I think we're both covered no matter what we do. Why these smart police officers would back to them.
And they still, they'll still be under the inspection thing by the board, right?
Yeah, they have a civilian over executive committee, or whatever they're called, with some elders and some counselors and chiefs and some boardists, it's a mental.
Should we be in touch with OCN to negotiate some kind of an agreement on shared services?
I think now would probably be a little early, but I think down the line when we start talking, like when, this will all come out that way and finally, Kevin Lewis is coming down next weekend, or next week, sorry, weekend. And myself, Kevin and the sergeants, Stacy Weens and OCN are going to go meet with Christian and talk about just, just, we want to get why they're leading that way, why they're doing, you know, certain things. If we failed them, what is it? Like, just get an answer and all that. And then the next question will be like, okay, why, how do you think it's going to happen this fast? We'd like to hear this because we're not trying to doubt you here, but that's quick. Maybe it is possible, maybe there's new ways of doing this so quick. And then it'll be like, okay, so when this transitions, we need to put a working agreement in place and we need input from yourselves, most definitely. Yeah, most definitely. So I don't know if that becomes a, you know, everyone's in their room at one time and we kind of say our thing or what, or. Kevin will, Kevin will kind of guide me through this, is what we need to do, reach to the town and let's set this up.
So who owns the building? Or there's, that's, they'll stay?
Well, it's owned by the federal government. Federal government owns it, just like any First Nation, right? So I think OCN owns the detachment.
Yeah, they said they had this painted off.
So who would be the best group to contact in terms of figuring out across Canada, if tops, if there are shared agreements with one another? Or was it the RCMP?
I would say if you probably call CAPS, like C-A-P-S in Winnipeg, probably Scott McMurty. I think a few people know who Scott McMurty is from here. He's the, he's a superintendent, he was in CAPS. And yeah, he would have, he would have a lot of know on this stuff.
Yeah, I mean, I'm all about dual support.
Oh, for sure.
If, you know, different than a fire, I mean, a big fire happens, how often, right? You go, but I mean, could have significant, on the other, on the other side, a few incidents happen where you're, like, how do you?
So like right now, your mechanism is, if, if Town of the Paw, RCMP are doing work on OCN, it's billed back to OCN RCMP, like right now, how is that working?
If it's overtime.
If it's overtime, it's being billed, but if it's just regular time?
Straight one, but it works both ways.
Sure, sure, yeah, I don't know.
And we get the better draw on this side for that agreement right now. Okay, without doubt, without doubt.
Okay.
It would be threefold.
Really?
The, the OCN members, although there's less, would do way more work for the paw than the paw would do for OCN.
Well, okay, no, okay, well, no, it's just, it's good to know.
Yeah, there's way, way more calls from the town side than there is in the reserve.
Right.
Yeah, I would say it's three to one even higher.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, and that's not changing in six months?
Probably not.
You know what I mean?
It's been there since two years I've been here, and I get that from even talking to Dave Mancini, it's been that way for a long year and a half.
Yeah, so.
That you can take a month where it might flip, but on average
For sure, but yeah, if you average out a year, a year over a year, well, so if there's no mechanism for billing that back, it works again both ways, right?
Yeah.
So what, I've
But in sheer, just to, that's a good point. But in sheer, like, who's gonna be backing up each other more, I would say we're probably gonna be over there more, because they only start with ten. And when they're working, there are never ten around, cause there's holidays, there's training. So you can take that ten and probably shrink it to five, six.
Really?
Yeah, and then they have a night and they have a day shift in that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Whereas you take us, we'll be sitting with, we'll lose the sentence count. Well, if those seven stick around, we could, we could be working with twenty seven. Which is a lot of bodies.
Yeah.
And okay, now I know you shrink it down, but when you have the people that are probably in the community, it's probably always gonna be about ten, twelve. So if something happens, if we're gonna have, you know, more bodies to go there to help.
Yeah.
And cover our own, is what I'm saying, I know there's more calls here, but we should have more bodies to cover our own. So
Needing us, needing us to call.
Yeah.
So you've been through, have you, you've been through this process in another community? Through the switch over?
Yeah.
You have?
Yeah.
So what was the turnaround time? It wasn't six months?
I think it was a year and a half.
Was it? Okay.
And then what had happened is when it came to the date that they put in question, and they had the chief of police, their inspector, we had our staff sergeant, our inspector from the district, which is Dauphinin, and we all sat at a table and they discussed like the, the, the IT, the equipment, the RCMP said that that had to be pulled out of that release there, so you have to put all yours in. Uh the staff, like, there's a girl, a lady that works over there, I don't know if she's gonna keep her job, if they're gonna take her or what, I would think they would be not foolish not to, if she's trained, it's the same computer system, knows the community and such.
Yeah.
So they got to get through that, and the biggest, the biggest transfer there is, is actually the file work that we do. So these, some of those files that you are still carrying are six, eight, nine months old. And you just turn them over and say, here you go, and they go, well, we don't know what's going on here.
Yeah.
So nine times out of ten, and how we work over there is that the RCMP just, on this day, day and time, did not respond to any more calls over there, but they continued working on what they had. Until it's officially, officially done.
Yeah.
And it avoided a lot of problems.
For sure.
And then there's other, you know, there's other decisions too, like there's contracts with janitors, guards, matrons, like, there's a lot of stuff to go through, right?
Lot of the administrative stuff is probably, yeah, okay.
So if um, if you, right now you're sharing services, if you need help, they come over and help, right? And they're valuable and, and you use them? So how will you handle it if you no longer have them? How will that work?
Like, sorry.
So like say if the DOV or wherever they are?
DOPS, yeah.
Yeah, they um, they don't come to this side of the river anymore.
Yeah.
We don't have that support.
But we then will retain the members that we have from there, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
If you didn't offer them, you didn't.
Yeah, if you didn't, I don't know how many members we have right now, fifteen?
Fifteen, yeah. Well, we're actually seventeen, cause we have two extra, yeah.
So are you, are you gonna be in a position where you need twenty-one?
No, I wouldn't think so.
No?
No.
You'll be okay.
I didn't so.
Okay.
I think right now for like, we're, we're uh, I mean, we always need more members, I'm not, I would never say to someone and say, hey, you wanna put two more members in the paw, I'd say, definitely. I mean, I'm not the one that, the council, I mean, town council pays for, you know, it's money there, but for me, if it's policing, it's a body, I'll take all the help I can get, but uh I, I don't foresee the change directly making us need anymore. Because we work with the same numbers, right? And OCN is OCN, and we have ours, and we get by on our side, we're helping for them and vice versa. Minus them and minus the work on their side, kinda equates to what we can learn from part of the paw.
I might have missed something, Brent, so the more members we have, we don't pay anymore, right?
No, well, once you're municipal, like, once they're gone, you're full in the municipality, right? We have position members designated for rural municipal, we keep the municipal full, so that we, what you guys paying for, you have those officers.
So what does this mean that, I don't know, we don't both, we don't put full-time equivalent to determine rent? Oh, just for the rent?
Yeah. Okay, sorry.
So would it be worth a while to be sending a letter shortly saying, we understand there's gonna be members that are provincial members or whatever, federal members? That will have to put their time in here and that we would like them, without having to pay for them?
It wouldn't hurt.
No, but why would?
No, but just keep in mind that this decision will solely be on the member. That member will come, they'll talk to staffing and the member will say like, you know what, I came up here for a four-year limited, or it was a five, it's changed to four, a four-year limited duration post, I fulfilled it, because I had nowhere else to go, they can't make them go in the paw to fulfill it, cause they just checked, I want OCN, that's where I went. So they have to allow them a checkmark, you've done your four, even though some of them might have only done eight months, or three years. Yeah, you, you get that checkmark, it's, it's, it's not their fault.
It's not their fault, but it's done.
That, that's right, so most of those members though, I, like, obviously I know them and they're you know, married or have a spouse or a better half in the community that have jobs, and I know they like it here, so I think they want to ride over the four years.
So probably wouldn't hurt then to throw, you're saying we
Never hurts, yes.
We'd be more than happy if we're not paying for it to us though.
Yeah. Yeah, like as it sits here
And technically that should reduce our rent, shouldn't it?
It may, it may short-term, yeah, they're in the building. Yeah, it, it's, it
And all our members
But in a way, up our members is the good part.
By the way, it kind of explained it should, I can't obviously say it for sure.
No, but I'm just saying, yeah, no turning it.
And then you should see, you know, a little more presence on the streets and around for a while anyway.
That would be beneficial.
Yeah. Yeah, it wouldn't hurt, Randy, I agree.
Um, we've met with the residents on um Trager and Cutmore uh about the walking path situation.
Right.
They um, they continually express frustrations.
Yeah.
If, if you guys are out and about, if you could, an extra eye open around that part now that, after the snow goes, it'll start again.
Yeah. Trigger.
Yeah, yeah.
I know we were talking about that last time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else? Anybody have any other questions?
Anything else, Brett?
Um, well, I'll just tell you too, like, so I, I mentioned that we're two cadets up like on paper, so we're two on paper working. Uh we have three more cadets coming in, so it's good. Uh I thought that that would save the town money, seeing that they're at a lower salary, but they're not, I guess, I was told by Kevin there that you, you pay for a member on an average per, doesn't matter what they make.
Yeah, it's that payroll thing, right?
Yeah, and I was wrong there, I thought, oh, I got some good news for you. Uh anyway, so we have uh two members, the Harrises, that are on the way out, sounds like they've sold their house now. Uh is the word today, and uh we're losing an OCN member. And we're losing a uh, another member of the paw, so we're gonna have four going out. And two up, so we're looking good, three coming in, so we're actually a little bit ahead on the staffing, which I like.
I know some of those young guys are making more of a presence uptown too. In the back lanes and whatnot.
Okay.
I'm seeing a, a bit of a difference recently in the amount of the street people in the back lanes and on the front street bothering people.
Okay.
So that's a good thing.
Okay. They're like, they're poaching and talking and stuff?
Yeah, yeah, they are.
Yeah, well, that's good to hear. I usually, when I know, I know my rule is kind of when I'm in the office, I usually go around the bullpen, and if the guy's just sitting there and if they're working, doing their thing, I'm like, let's go quick and let's go for patrol and, we're trying to push on the, the shift exchange to, to get these people picked up. Later, well, cause they're gonna, we're gonna get a call about them anyway.
Yeah.
And if it saves us from, you know, uh, doing it later on a busy night, from just dealing with them, we can do other things, and we can try to put them in jail for the night, cause hate to say it, sometimes it's time to get calling or doing it anyway, so.
I spoke with the one officer that I bumped into and he was explaining a few of those things to me, and then he said, I'd rather be out here making a difference than sitting behind on the computer. He said, I'd much rather be in a vehicle taking care of this.
And that, that goes for all of us, but it's that, you're always drawing on the computer, right?
Yeah.
RCMP is kind of says one thing and does the other, they really want to sort of push the guys to get out, but then they make all this other stuff that makes you sit in your chair, so. Anyway.
Yeah, actually, I've seen a couple members walking through downtown. And it's, it's nice to see.
Good to see.
It, it's good to see, and it'd be nice to see more of that, like, I don't know how much you can push that, like, I, I understand, but you know, it's a, it's a big thing to see, you know, especially if you're picking your spots, right? Like if you're picking the, the days of the week, or the times of the month, or the hours of the day, that, that they're out there, right?
Yeah, okay, well, thanks.
Yeah, no, it's good to see.
Great, thank you for coming.
Okay.
Take care.
Yeah.
Public Works, uh we had invited uh Mr. Hokus to attend, but he couldn't make it this evening?
No, um Give me one sec, I don't know if I put it in here. Um Mr. Hokus is wanting to meet in camera, but I don't see how it falls under any of our in-camera guidelines um to discuss, he said that it would, I'm, I was very specific to the discussion on parking. And he said that it would be very specific to his business, and he preferred to have an in-camera session. So I just wanted to put that open. But again, that doesn't fall under part of our in-camera, this is very specific to parking.
Okay. Very sure.
Okay, so the, the guidelines for in-camera discussions are typically staffing issues and negotiations?
Mm-hmm.
I, I don't think a parking bylaw discussion really falls under that category. Um, we can, I, I know he's a fairly busy fellow too. Uh if he can't make this evening, maybe we could ask him when he could come.
Okay.
Um, keeping in mind that we'd like to move forward with this in one way or another before too long, but um, let's, let's give him one more ca, one more shot. Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Yeah? All right.
The, the other thing is, is that can he come in and just talk to you, or talk to, I'm not, I'm just saying, I don't
I had asked for the information, and then the last time I came up, it was come to council, because I didn't receive it at that point yet.
Okay, uh three point two, fire safety.
This was kind of disappointing some time back, I was waiting for Office of the Fire Commissioner, they had had quite a few changes um in their um managers and stuff also. But this came as a result of any kind of protection that people in town would have if they're renting single-family dwellings. I contacted landlord tenants branch, they don't have any, any authority or any protection for tenants um as it relates to fire safety. I also talked to OFC, and they said the other issue is, again, is a municipality, they said great on the town of the paw for wanting to initiate or instigate something like this. However, at the end of the day, we have no authority to enter their home unless we are given permission. So we can't just go, that looks like a, a bad-looking home, we want to go inspect it, we can't do that. However, I don't see what would be wrong with us um establishing a program which leaves that open, like it might even be during fire safety week, saying, do you want an inspection of your home or your property, or your rental property? That would enable us to come in and provide with uh our, our leadership and letting you know what you're required for fire safety in your home.
Well, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah. I think that's a good idea too, cause I, actually, there was a place I visited that was a rental that was for sale, and I thought it was of like a, a major health concern, so I called. And they said, it doesn't matter if I call or not, the renter has to call. But the renter wasn't gonna call, because then they felt that the rent was gonna be upped.
Yeah.
And they didn't want to get kicked out, so it was, but I thought it was the preferable condition, so anyway.
As long as we're invited in by either the landlord or the tenant, we have the right to go in the home if they invite us in.
Mm-hmm.
So I think it would, wouldn't be a bad idea to just come up with a little bit of a program.
Put it out there, at least we're doing something.
I think similarly, I'd like, I thought that the fire alarm thing was cool that they did when they were going around.
It's a good program.
It's very disappointing to see this, cause anything in the Act over ten dwellings or ten units is a requirement to be inspected, but anything under that isn't. And it is really disappointing that there is no one out there looking out for that one person that is renting a home, right?
You said the tenant can invite in, it doesn't have to be the landlord?
Correct. Correct. And most of the, like, most of the apartment buildings are welcoming us in there, because it puts a protection on them too. It's going, we had our building inspected, if something goes wrong, this was our last inspection. So it's a safety net for not only your tenants, but also for the landlord.
Probably happens somewhere in your insurance, I would think too, right?
I would imagine.
Showing that they did due diligence on their building or whatever.
So in saying that, can I direct?
Yeah, I, I think it's
Someone come up with a program?
It's a good idea on the fire prevention today.
Okay.
It's unfortunate.
Very, very surprising.
Uh AMM resolution for district meeting.
So I would like this, we talked about it at the table, I've gone through the Saskatchewan Act, and I've also gone through the Manitoba Act. The Saskatchewan Act is very, very clear on the liability of um immunity from liability for firefighter, volunteer and the municipality. So I'm requesting that we put in a letter or a resolution into the AMM that would say that we make changes to legislation to include the same authority as this. Um, we have a tiny little paragraph, this is Su, or Saskatchewan.
Yeah.
And it's very detailed and very good, there is no room for question. So we would require a resolution to take to the June district meeting, so that it gets on table for November.
Awesome, yeah, I think we should do it.
You know, this is further to the situation we find ourselves in right now.
Right.
And when I was at AMM, we spoke to several mayors and reeves, and we have a lot of support across the province right now. So now would be a good time to move this issue forward and hopefully prevent this from happening again someday. Get some momentum. Okay. Uh payroll and accounts.
So we would require a resolution for pay period number seven, the amount of one oh two six thirty-two twenty-five. General checks, the amount of one sixty-four nine fifty-eight ninety-four, and AFTs, the amount of one ten six thirty-five thirty-four. For a total of three seventy-eight two twenty-six fifty-three. We'll also need a resolution for checking conflict in the amount of two thousand six seventy-seven oh seven. Um, in saying that, some of our bigger bills are Morgan fuels for Jet Aid for the airport, seventeen thousand three eighty-three. Trading company, that was our town fuel, in the amount of twelve thousand nine twenty. Tax service, it was almost fifteen thousand dollars, these are for tax sale fees. So that's, that's recouped through the tax sale itself. Viapone for our alarm annual check was seventy-nine forty. And STICCO would have been one of our last bigger billings for the amount of seventy thousand nine fifty-one for all our, for paying for facilities.
The check register is unattached, did everybody get a chance to have a peek at it, if you have any questions?
The, the detailed check report is there, but the uh, the check register is in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But they've got the detailed check report, but not the, the normal check register we get, that's just got the listend of the checks. That's just uh, that's just
Yeah, that one.
Oh my god, never mind.
This one's on here?
Yeah, it's on there. It's at the bottom of the uh dispersment report, oh my gosh. Quit changing things.
It's okay, Chuck.
We know you're tired today.
Yeah, no, I'm too, I'm too, good start, yeah.
That um, so JR Cousins, didn't we say we were them paying?
It might have been just a last, because we haven't even received a report yet. Oh wait, JR, hang on.
I just thought, I mean, I was going through this, that's the only thing that I can
Yeah, cause I thought the last time there was a JR Cousins check, and that was the last holdback, well.
Yeah, that's what I thought too.
This could be the holdback from the, like, the report though.
The holdback for the holdback? The holdback for the holdback?
Double holdback, maybe.
No, I thought when we talked about it, it said that was it, we were all done with, yeah. I'm sure it's legit, but
Couldn't sound like it, sure.
What else do you have?
I don't even know what check number it is, what check number is it?
No, it's on that uh EFT check. Under J, or JR?
I don't find it. What's the letter before?
J?
R? C-O zero zero zero?
I can get you an answer.
Yeah, I mean, like you said, it's
I don't know, I can't find it.
It's on the check register on here?
Yeah.
The detailed check report.
Oh, okay, uh, not on this one, though, the, on the dispersment.
It says infrastructure renewal plans.
Okay, right.
That's for the, uh, infrastructure renewal plan.
For clarity, though, fellas, we were on the dispersment report, and then we scroll down to the, uh, Town of the Paw check register summary. So at least if we're all looking for something, we could be all be on the same page. Okay, so, the summary one, we're all good with?
Yep.
Yes, okay, so let's have a look at the detailed.
It's, um, invoice number T six oh seven.
Give me one sec.
Yeah.
Infrastructure, infrastructure renewal plans.
Under capital.
Yep.
Maybe that's where that went.
Mm-hmm, I don't know. Because I know they were, yeah.
Is that Dylan, I'm sure it took a long time to come back in.
Also put in an extra effort to do an extra great report. I thought he said that we were gonna get that this week after.
Yeah.
We called Salmon from home, just to come and, uh.
Yes, we passed.
No overtime.
I jumped to the pump. Uh, the last one was for Asb- uh, towards the Asb- drawings, it was forty-eight hundred, I believe, uh, with eighteen thousand more to go, nineteen thousand.
What do you mean by the Asb-?
So that's just the finished construction drawings, so where your curb stops are, where your piping is, the depth of pipe, size of pipe, all your, uh, completed construction drawings.
And that was for the rows?
Yeah.
So we still have another billing after this?
I believe it's nineteen thousand more is left on the, on their, uh, contract.
This is covered in the budget.
Sure.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. Thank you.
No problem, Michael.
I had to ask, 'cause I didn't know what Asb- meant.
It sounded like one word, Asb-. What's an Asb-?
It's an Asb-.
Yeah.
Any other questions on the register?
Under, anybody else you wanna call?
We're talking to Drew. I don't like the shit of that rant. Down the mountains.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're good with that?
Resolution will be forthcoming.
Alrighty. Council indemnity bylaws, issue sheets.
So, what had happened is, in twenty seventeen and eighteen, in accordance with the indemnity bylaws, council had taken a ten percent decrease. So, in twenty nineteen, they were looking at a yearly increase, which was a norm based on the CPI, um, Consumer Price Index. So, this is the year that it's supposed to go back to getting the CPI, and that would be a percentage of two-point-seven-zero increase. So in order to put that back on the indemnity, I would require a resolution.
I'm not buying you again?
Well, it, when, when they were doing the austerity measures, they cut council's pay, like, ten percent. So if we wanted to be covered for, uh, inflation, CPI, we would have to pass a resolution to give ourselves a raise. Um, my only thoughts would be right now, is it might be somewhat premature, 'cause we're still, we haven't finalized the budgets yet. So in the event that we were going to get this big-time increase, uh, I'd like to see it after we do the budgets.
Actually, I would like us to just hold, uh, hold where we are for this year, and see where, where we are next year. I think that, uh, that's what would be.
I would just need direction, 'cause it's in your bylaw, that you would get it for twenty nineteen, so that would just, I will do whatever council suggests, but I just need to know, because our bylaw states right now.
If we could, let's just, let's just hold off until after the budgets are done.
Okay.
Review, uh, okay, review of com- council committees and boards.
Um, this has come up a couple of times, as it relates to, some members feel that, um, maybe it's not adequate for them to be on certain committees. Whether it be that they don't meet, whether it be that we're just considered extra bodies, and it was just to bring the discussion back to the table, to see where you feel you are with some of these committees.
Well, I guess my question would be, um, the committees that haven't, we haven't met at all, is, are they really active? And then I guess the question is, do we have, are we having, do we still have all the right people in the right committees? I think we've made some changes lately, uh, just from last week, which regards to the CDC, which will help. I think the, uh, DMC seems to be getting a little bit more active right now, but how long that, that, uh, you know, where we go with that, but. So we got the coalition, I don't know what's going on with that, um.
I can't tell you, coalition was something that we initiated, and now we've passed it on to OCN, and they're in the process of doing it right now. But I guarantee you're not gonna see a meeting until midsummer, if that. Because they haven't even really started up yet.
Well, maybe it's just a slow start, I thought it would be a little bit more active. Kelsey planning, I don't know what's going on with that.
Yeah, we're not sure what to do on that one.
Kinda just waiting for that report, that, I think, but that's, that's a big thing, there's not much point in meeting. Like, it's tough to say what, what we can and can't drop, I guess we just, we need to have a discussion on, on, you know, there's. If we wanna be on all these committees that we're on, you know, like, I'm on COPP, is it necessary, I don't know. Uh, you know, Chamber of Commerce, you know, all, they're all individual discussions, I guess, and is that the route we wanna go?
Yeah, well, you know, we, as a community agency, we need to be involved with the community. It's unfortunate when some of these groups don't meet very often, right? And you, you ask for a committee report at council, and the report is no meeting. You know, so you, you wonder, right, is it a valuable use of our time or not? Uh, that being said, if there's other committees that people have been interested in, I'm sure members of council would be welcome. So if there's something that somebody is interested in pursuing, why don't we get it on the table and see if that's where we wanna be?
Or we look at the end of the year, and we, we decide, after we've had a bit of time, to decide whether, because, you know, if we sit here for a whole year, and we haven't been, we've met once. Then what, what's the point of continuing to be involved in that? And, you know, we sit there and say, well, hey, you made an update on that, we haven't met, we haven't met, we haven't met.
There's, there's truth in that.
Each November, we do go through our committee appointments.
Exactly.
Yeah. In saying that, it was probably two years ago that we did go through our listing, because we did find that council members were used more as a quorum. So we did get rid of a lot of the committees that council members did sit on. We were basically a quorum, and that was it, like, to, to enable a group to have a quorum, that was our only involvement in the meeting. So some that weren't maybe necessarily, um, of high interest to the town, or some of the ones that we pulled off, and.
Okay.
I don't know, is any, I guess the better question you'd ask is that, does anybody feel they're on a committee right now, that is, they should be removed from the list? Because either they, or, uh, like, I, I can only speak for what I'm on, but I know the museum meets regularly, and, you know, we, we give them, uh, money and support to have representatives on. Recycling the same thing, that has even a much bigger financial impact. Uh, but, well, is there anyone that people feel they're?
Well, yes, sure, it was, I mean, maybe it's just a, a false sense of frustration, but, you know, you have, like, for me, an example of the DMC, I mean. Like, ah, you know, we meet once every quarter, you know, I, I, and maybe I'm missing some things, because I'm new, and I don't know the whole flow of it, and I should give it a little bit more time, but. You know, that's where I thought, man, there's not a lot of work to, to be involved in this group here. Um, you know, we talk about Kelsey School Division, where we finally got a meeting, but, you know, we talk about the coalition, or I've never met with anybody, you know, there's that, that's kinda where I was coming from, it's like. Is there really necessary, or is something all of a sudden gonna happen, sort of thing? So, I mean, I'm good to, I mean, I brought it forward, I mean, I can wait a year and see how things go, but if we're gonna review it in November, we'll have a look in November. 'Cause I don't, I don't want somebody else, uh, on our, on our council to just swamp with meetings every single night, and I'm sitting around with, you know, meeting once a quarter, one group. That's kinda what was my point, was that somebody needs help, like.
No, it's a fair, fair point, 'cause it's, you know. If you don't feel like you have enough to do, there's always more you can jump on.
There always is.
All those gaps in the race.
Never people need help.
Okay, so, so we'll, we'll monitor it throughout the course of the year.
Yep.
And put it back on review.
Yeah.
Yeah, sounds good.
Is there anything in the bylaws?
Think you guys just have to appoint?
I'm sorry, Carrie, what was that?
Oh, sorry, I was asking Trent, um, in regards to Chamber of Commerce, oh, sorry, if there is a meeting that I couldn't make, and if Andre was open that night, if he could attend it for me.
Council rep, yeah, why not?
We still have alternative.
As long as, as long as his name's there, like, we just ask for that letter of appointment, right? As long as his name's added to it, let's go.
Yeah.
Seventeen.
That's what I was about, that's what I was about, Carrie, I was talking to everybody else. Whatever.
Going with Dull that night.
Coalition meeting. What a coalition meeting.
We're going to the recycling board or something.
I can't make that meeting, other.
Alright.
I already did the, uh, meeting.
So we're, okay, so we're, we're gonna review it as the year goes on, and, uh, see where we end up. Uh, request for, from the CFO to extend the financial plan, I think this is a housekeeping issue.
Yeah, and Graham had brought this up the other night, about making sure we have the forty-day notice, so we've moved it, and we're asking for a two-week extension.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is always fun, four point five, tax impact, open house meetings, I've done them before, you're gonna really enjoy it.
They're sad, they're very sad.
So the assessment branch comes up, because they're, they're continually working on the reassessment, so they'll be coming up in July, it looks like.
June for us, June tenth.
June tenth, to go over the pending assessment configuration with us, and, uh, you all need to attend it, it will be very illuminating.
It basically tells you where it's increased, where it's decreased, what we're looking after assess values for twenty-twenty, and then usually a month later, they'll hold an actual open house for the public. And they hold it in our office, so that people wanna come and talk about their property and their assessments. But this is, when it says tax impact, 'cause the assessments show the biggest impact on, on a community for tax-wise. So it is a, it is a very good meeting, but it's depressing.
Is that like an open meeting, like, or just for a meeting with us?
It'll be a meeting for council, right? You'll get the heads up, and then later on, they'll have a public meeting with the community.
Oh, okay.
It gives you a chance to, uh, educate yourself.
And we get those figures beforehand, correct?
Not always, no.
Nope, okay.
Yeah, so.
They come here to discuss them, not not.
Do they? Okay, I thought we had it.
I know it's a daytime meeting, and.
The open house?
Uh, well, the meeting with council is at five fifteen. Um, we really, it really is important, I've been trying to pretend. Is it, uh?
It's important.
It's important.
It's dry.
Well, it'll explain to you how the tax burden is going to shift. Uh, Flint Flom Bombers Letter of Support. That's okay.
Andre, you had brought this up, and it was just as, uh, no, um, Flint Flom Bombers wanna put in a bid to host the National Junior A Championship. Um, this is the formal Royal Bank Cup, and I believe we have a very positive spin-off by providing a letter of support for them, like, accommodations, shopping, meals.
Potential games?
Yeah.
That's a good game, oh, yeah, no, you could, you could do, uh, could be a great two-community event.
What year are they looking to host?
Twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty, 'cause when was the last one, the two thousand two?
I don't remember.
I don't remember. Definitely be a good thing for the community.
Yeah, it was awesome, the last time it happened, yeah.
So we'll drop something else.
Uh, okay, the Smart Cities announcement, uh, so the plan is to have the announcement in May seventeen, May fifteenth, fourteenth and fifteenth in Ottawa. Uh, and they're wondering if somebody from the community would like to go.
I heard you were going.
Uh, so it's in Ottawa, and I'm not sure who's going from the other two communities.
There's one rep from all of the tri-council.
Yeah.
And they're gonna be doing the announcement on the fourteenth, and then on the fifteenth, they wanna hold people for an extra day, if, if they're interested. In meeting with the other people that put in their ideas, and just, uh, kinda network amongst each other. So you're looking at two days, they're paying the expenses through the Smart Cities funding, the only thing it would cost Town of the Paw's indemnity.
Wouldn't we send Chad, though, if he was the rep?
So the, the plan is to send the whole, the whole project team.
Okay.
But it's just, it's, it's being sent out to open it up, to see if there's anybody else from, uh, to go.
Well, if there's a second person, I suggest Herb goes as well.
I need to let them know, so.
I think Herb does.
So you're for sure going?
I am slated to go as part of the project team, yes.
Do we know if we're gonna chief as well?
Don't know yet, I can ask.
Can we find out?
I honestly think it would be a good thing, you know what I mean, like, there's a, there, we have, we have a really good chance of winning, um, so.
We'll make some contacts either way.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I'll ask if Chief and the reaver are going?
Yep.
Uh, nothing for personnel, nothing on airports. New business next meeting, update on consulting, update on outstanding consultant reports, update on the planning district. Uh, CDC council board appointments. Anything else you guys wanna read, next agenda?
I'm trying to find that, we're.
So the reason I put these as new business next meeting, 'cause these were things that I didn't quite get done, that I didn't wanna fall off the radar, so that you know it's still on.
Good. It's a good way of doing it.
Well, for me, too.
'Cause it keeps it, keeps it, yeah.
Okay. I think we have a few things for in-camera.
Yeah, no, we're gonna find that, uh, we're gonna go again.
Well, it's, if you click on the in-camera thing.
I just did.
Um. It might be going. It's going.
Just click.
Just remember, you bet, eh?
Do you know, do you know, move ourselves?
That's how we're gonna close our front doors, that's our law.
With the mayor's chair.
Yeah, I can, I can bring it up, yes.
Do you all have it memorized yet, Andre?
No, no, actually, sorry, guys, I, I got a good memory, it's just, it's crazy short.
Go ahead, Carrie?
I think Trevor knew it better, I think it's, we now move into the in-camera portion of the.
Committee of the Hold, with Mayor Herb Jakes.
Our resolve that we now move ourselves into the in-camera portion of the committee of hold with Mayor Jakes and the chair to discuss matters requiring our attention.